We'll start off with rule call attendance, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Borton?
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow?
Here.
Councilwoman Strater?
Here.
Councilman Hoagland?
Here.
Councilman Burn?
Here.
An absence, Mayor Simison.
Thank you. On to item two, Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, Adoption of the Agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hoagland.
A couple of things for our agenda tonight. Just to note that under six A, there is a request for a continuance that we will deal with when we get to that point. Also, earlier this evening, during our council work session, we ran out of time to have a discussion on that agenda of items three E and F, which is an issue with council members designated to serve as contact in certain city areas, as well as the resolution that accompanied that. We'd like to put that under, make that item six C for discussion later tonight. And so with that addition, Mr. President, I move approval of the adopt, move approval of the adoption of the agenda.
Second. I have a motion as second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, Future Meeting Topics. Mr. Clerk, do we have any signings?
Mr. President, there was no one signed in for this.
Okay. Takes us to item number five, Community Items and Presentations. Do we have a representative from the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council? There she is. Perfect, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, of course. Hi, City Council. My name's Abby Hutchins, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, and this is going to be my monthly update. Okay, so first on the agenda is our storyboard installation. We didn't have as much of a turnout as we would like, but we got everything done in under an hour, which is really nice. So that went very, very well. And then for our friend competition, we had a huge turnout, and Meridian High School was the winner, so we supplied them a pizza party, and we had that yesterday at our general council meeting. And then next, for Point of Hope Planning, it's still going to be on May 2nd, and what we've done in the past month is we've created sponsorship letters, and we've mailed them out to Albertson's and different companies to see if they would like to sponsor our run, and we're going to touch base with them in the next week. And for our Valentine's Day cards, this went really well. We made Valentine's Day cards for Renaissance, and then we did different Valentine's Day stuff for our other schools, but we couldn't make all of the Valentine's Day cards for our other schools. We're planning on doing that next year, though. And then lastly, we had our Roaring Twenties Murder Mystery Party. So what we did for that is we held games and events on February 28th, and we actually had a big turnout for that, and we counted that towards our friend competition as well. So we had most of our turnout for our friend competition in that one. And that's what we've done in the past month. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
No.
You guys do such a great job. I appreciate you coming tonight.
Well, thank you so much.
All right.
Thanks, Ed.
Have a good night.
Appreciate it. Have a good night. That takes us to item number six, Action Items. Mr. Hoagland spoke earlier that we have an open public hearing right now with Sky Mesa, which is H-2019-0123. It's been continued to this evening. There is a request, the applicant is wanting to continue this to future date, and that's what we'd like to discuss this evening. Is the applicant here to discuss? Okay, perfect, come. Thank you for joining us this evening. If you could just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Todd Tucker. Work with Boise Hunter Homes, 729 South Bridgeway Place in Eagle, Idaho, 83616.
Perfect. So is there a date that you want to continue this to, then?
We've requested one more week. The issue is, and I understand the council's concern about continuing, to continue this item, we've got really one issue that we're trying to work out with the Highway District, with ACHD. And so we're very close on getting that finally resolved, but it just hasn't happened yet. And so that's why the continued request for pushing this down the road. We, we don't really like it. We're ready for this
Right.
to be over and to have the hearing with you all and to get a decision on this. And so from our side, we're a little bit frustrated as well, but we're, we're working with the Highway District, and we're very close, we feel, to getting a final resolution to this one item that we are working with them.
Thank you, Todd, for, for joining us this evening. We, we realize that this happens, and you know, there's a lot of stakeholders that are in play and a lot of decisions that need to be made. At the end of the day, I think it's our focus that the residents that may or may not be affected by this application are aware of the continuing, the continuances of it. So I guess my question is, is, is a week enough? Do we need a conservative, is that a conservative estimate? Do we need to push it out maybe, you know, two or three more weeks just to be safe? And if so, do, is, is, I guess I have a question for council. Do, is this something that we need, you feel that we need to renotice to the, to the folks who live around the area?
So, Mr. President, to answer your question, I talked with our owner today because I, I had a feeling this question would come up, and so I asked him today, you know, what are your thoughts on moving this out further than just one week to give us a little time to make sure? And, and he responded to me that he would like to just have it one more week. And so, so that's what I can present to you today, is that we're, we're really just asking for one more week, and we're really going to work hard to get a resolution to this so that we can have a full public hearing next week. As far as renoticing, we're not opposed to that. If you would like us to renotice, change the sign, we've got to sign up there. We can do that. I know the public notice that goes out comes from, from the city and your department, but, but we're not opposed to that.
Thoughts from council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Todd, can you give us just kind of a snapshot about what you've done to communicate with the public, kind of in light of these continuances that have been reoccurring? What type of communication do you have with any impacted residents? Are you speaking to them regularly? Or are you just reliant on the city process to communicate?
Mr. President, Councilmember Cavanagh, we've, we've really just relied on the city process at this point. We've had, there were a handful of people that came to the city, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and I'd met with them before, before we went to Planning and Zoning Commission to, to visit with them on what we were proposing to do. There's really a handful of homeowners up on Lake Hazel Road that are really the most affected by this and, and have been the most interested in the project. But as far as additional notification or visiting with them, we haven't done much outreach in that, in that regard.
Mr. President.
I heard a "Mr. President."
Just my, my thoughts. Appreciate the optimism to be able to be back here next week. I think that we've, maybe as a body, we see this happen. Good intentions, something happens, somebody, the Highway District's on vacation, somebody gets sick, it, it impacts, then you're back before us again. I would almost suggest, and you almost kind of have a carrot and a stick here, so maybe we continue it two weeks to the 24th. The council doesn't meet on the 31st. And so if you guys aren't able to have everything ready to go by the 24th, now, now you're going to be another two more weeks out. So that's kind of where my thought is, listen, you guys get everything dialed in for next week, you get an extra week where you get, get a rest. But should something happen, it gives you guys a little bit more of a buffer. Just because I, to, to the council president's point, this is a two-way process, both for you and our citizens. We want to make sure that everybody's ready to go.
We understand that.
Mr. Strater.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I agree with, with the councilmen. I, I think, you know, Mr. Cavanagh pointed out, it's good to give ourselves a little buffer here. I, I would hate to continue again. I think that would look really terrible. So it also wastes people's time who want to come testify, and if there are people here today, I don't know if there are any folks in the crowd. I wish we could give them the opportunity to say something if they were here, and this is the only time that works for them. I'm in agreement at least two weeks out, and I think we need to renotice it because it just feels like this could have fallen off people's radar.
I, I would agree. We all got a question. If we, if we do decide to renotice, what does that look like as far as timeframe?
So, Mr. President, members of the council, you probably get a month to renotice it properly, to change the mailers, resend mailings, rev-publish in the paper. You're probably talking three to four weeks.
Mr. President.
I might suggest you consider that maybe the applicant's aware that if you continue for two weeks and another continuance comes, then it's going to have to be renoticed. Because then we are pushed it out pretty far. But I think you could probably, it's your call on whether or not two weeks. But renoticing on the sign is fine, but, I mean, no one normally does that, but you could do that. But that's not real notice. I mean, real notice is mailed, published, and assigned, and that takes about a month.
Mr. President, do, what was the date of the, do we know the date of the first noticing?
Yes, it was first noticed on February 4th. It was continued to February 25th, and again, for a second time, continued to this evening.
Mr. President.
Yeah.
Just feels to me like we should, I feel like doing the right thing would be to properly notice it and have the meeting in, in a month, in three weeks, if that's the earliest practicable, to make sure that all of the neighbors have, you know, plenty of notice. If it's been continued twice, that seems like a lot to expect someone to follow the ins and outs of all this when they have a day job and other stuff going on.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Thought, I think the full noticing of the newspaper and the sign and the mailings seems somewhat ambitious, just given the, the timeline. In my six years, I don't know anybody that has shown up to a city council meeting because they read about a notice in a newspaper.
Right.
I know we do it. I know it's required. You guys do it, but I've never heard somebody say, I saw this in the newspaper. Right here, where we hear from folks, I see the sign, I see about it on Nextdoor, I get a postcard. I think those things we could probably do, talk real quick with staff, they feel confident their ability to get those turned out. You guys get the sign dialed in. I think that we could accomplish this within two weeks and achieve the same outcome of you doing meaningful education to the public. If I had more faith that people weren't reading newspapers anymore and that was determining that they were coming in, I would be all for that, but I just think in terms of process, it seems like an extra box of check.
Mr. Hoagland. Mr. Mayor. Tom, do you know, you said it, you know, it's, it's partially populated out there relatively. So how many people are we talking about within the requirement of the 300 feet of the property line?
Mr. President, Councilmember Hoagland, when we sent out the notices for the neighborhood meeting, I think we had to send 21 letters. One, one individual came to the noticed neighborhood meeting, and then the residents that live on Lake Hazel weren't able to attend that. So I, I held a separate neighborhood meeting with them to talk through the issues, and there are four, four homeowners up there that we've been, that we interacted with at that, at that neighborhood meeting with them. And that came to the, to the public hearing.
Mr. President.
Mr. Clerk.
For the clerk's office, we noticed 31 postcards to 300 foot, so 31 is about what you were saying.
Okay. And, Mr. Clerk, just to follow up, in, we are, we are in a position to send out postcards within a week to give, or we can have to give the folks, if we were to move it out two weeks, to give them notice?
Mr. President, yes, we could send those tomorrow. We would not be in line with state code of having it 14 days ahead of time, but we would be meeting the spirit of what you're requesting.
Okay. Last, last question for council, just to get a feedback. Is this, is this something that council feels that the city should pay for, or is this something that we should have the developer pay for?
Mr. President, I'd like to have the applicant cover that cost, and I would be agreeable to, to allow it to be pushed out for two weeks if they will notice all of, of the individuals by mail. I think that's a small enough number. That's probably a reasonable request for us to not have you wait an entire four weeks. That's my proposal.
Is the applicant, does the applicant agree to that, Todd?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
That, is that regular mail, or do we need to send them certified mail, regular mail?
How'd you send them originally?
I think it was regular.
Your mail's fine.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And Todd, just, just a request, too. I think it's good, being a good neighbor. If you got their contact info, you got their email address, phone number, give them a call, shoot them an email, let them know. I just think that when the collaboration between applicant and neighbors is strong, it just makes for a better project and better product for everybody.
Okay.
Mr. President, sorry, I know you might be doing the same thing. I want to clarify, the city clerk's office will send the postcards to our 300-foot radius, and the applicant will pay the renoticing fee to community development. It sounded like you were going toward them sending those postcards, but we typically do that. He was referring to the neighborhood meeting.
Right. So, yes, I believe that we would send those postcards out at, and then do we normally, just for clarification, do we normally charge a, a new fee to, is that how it works?
I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. President, you do have a, a renotice fee that we assign to the applicant. Once they pay that, we renotice. And we will, to clarify, we'll send the postcards and also do a Nextdoor update and update the city's website with a new date once directed.
Oh, we're good?
Yes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hoagland.
I would move that we continue the public hearing for Sky Mesa, H-2019-0123, to March 24th, 2020, with the conditions that they pay for the reno, pay a renotice fee for the mailing to the area residents and an update to the sign on the property for the new date.
Second.
I have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any ayes? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. I appreciate you, man. I appreciate you being a good neighbor. Helps out a lot. Thank you. Onto item six B, Public Hearing for Gray Cliff Estate Subdivision. This item is H-2019-0129, and how this process works, for those who are in attendance, we'll have staff give their presentation first, and we'll invite the applicant to come up and give their presentation, and then after that, we'll allow public testimony. And each person will have three minutes to give their, their testimony. If there's anyone in attendance that's representing an HOA or an organization of that type, well, you can, you can have up to 10 minutes. So with that said, we'll just pass it off to Sonia and for staff report.
No, thank you.
So, you're Sonia.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. The first application before you tonight is a request for a development agreement modification and a preliminary plat. This site consists of 52.46 acres of land. It's owned R8 and R40, and it's located at the southwest of West Harris Street and South Meridian Road. This property was previously annexed back in 2015, and a preliminary plat was approved with 120 building lots, and that's the plat shown there on the left. A subsequent preliminary plat was approved in 2018, and that's shown on the right, which increased the number of buildable lots to 136. And this entitlement is still valid. So whether or not the council approves this application before you tonight, they are vested with this, entitled with this preliminary plat shown on the right. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is medium density residential and high density residential. The applicant is requesting a modification to the existing development agreement to increase the number of single-family residential building lots from 136 to 200, and the qualified open space from 8.85 to 8.97 acres. The number of multifamily buildable lots and apartments are proposed to stay the same at 2 and 24, 2, excuse me, and 224 units respectively. Other minor modifications to the development agreement are noted in section 8A of the staff report. The previous gross density of the single-family residential portion was 3.23 units per acre compared to 4.9 units per acre currently proposed. The density of the multifamily residential portion is the same at 14.18 units per acre. The proposed increase in density is still consistent with that desired in the future land use map designations for this site. The previous development plan included a 1,720 linear foot segment of the city's 10-foot wide multi-use pathway in a linear open space area bisecting the site where the northwest pipeline is located. And that is this area right here, if you can see where my pointer's at. And children's play structure and yard shuffleboard were also proposed as amenities. The proposed plan still includes a multi-use pathway and children's play structure, but the yard shuffleboard has been removed, and a community swimming pool is proposed as an upgraded amenity. The access and interconnectivity proposed to adjacent parcels with the proposed plan is substantially the same as the previous plan. The proposed plat, as shown, consists of 200, excuse me, 200 single-family residential building lots, two multifamily residential building lots, 14 common lots, three common driveway lots, one park lot that may be a portion of a future city neighborhood park, and one city well lot on 52.46 acres of land in the R8, R40 zoning districts. Proposed single-family residential lots range in size from 4,200 to 9,600 square feet, with an average lot size of 4,692 square feet, and a gross density of 4.89 units per acre. The project is proposed to develop in four phases, with the multifamily residential portion developing last, and that does, the applicant's proposal included the pathway in that. Access is proposed via the extension of West Harris Street, a collector from South Meridian Road, State Highway 69. A collector street is also planned along the west boundary of the site in accord with the master street map. Public streets are proposed for internal access within the single-family residential development, with sub streets at the project's south and east boundaries for future extension. Two driveway connections are proposed between the single-family residential and multifamily residential portions of the development for interconnectivity. A driveway is required at the east boundary of the multifamily development to the future Stapleton subdivision development to the east for emergency access. A total of 8.97 acres, or 17% of qualified open space, is proposed in excess of UDC standards, including a 1.69 acre common area on the north side of Harris that may be included with common area and adjacent developments, Biltmore Estates and Brundage Estates, and consolidated for a city neighborhood park. Site amenities are proposed, as previously mentioned, that exceed the minimum standards. The Sundell and the Tumblr laterals which cross this site are proposed to be piped with development. The Williams Northwest Gas Pipeline, as I mentioned, bisects this site and lies within a 75-foot wide easement. All development within this easement is required to adhere to the most current standards in the Williams Gas Pipeline Developers Handbook. The applicant has provided the city with a lease on a parcel of land within Lot 1, Block 9, for a future city well lot, and that is this lot right here, northwest corner of the site. The well lot shall be created and deeded to the city at the time of final plating. Conceptual building elevations were submitted, as shown, that demonstrate the quality of homes and architecture proposed. Because facades of homes adjacent to collector streets will be highly visible, elevations are required to incorporate articulation to break up monotonous wall planes and roof lines visible from the public rideaway. The commission recommended approval of the preliminary plat. A summary of the commission hearing is as follows. Becky McKay, the applicant's representative, testified in favor, along with Cody Stogur from L2 Construction. Jennifer Pedrally testified in opposition. Monica Bronson commented, and written testimony was received from the applicant in response to the staff report. Key issues of public testimony were as follows. The applicant requested a change to condition 810 in section nine of the staff report to allow the well lot to be dedicated to the city after recording of the final plat instead of at the time of final plating. Not in favor of the proposed increase in density due to there already being a lot of traffic in the area and school overcrowding, and belief that impact fees are too low to support all the development in Meridian. Ms. Leylaw requests the developer install a six-foot tall fence on top of a berm across the entire southern end of the development adjoining her property to ensure crops on her property won't be ruined due to trespassing. And then an underground pipe is installed to accommodate drainage from her property to replace the existing ditch that runs across this site that serves the, that purpose currently. The applicant has agreed to install fencing as requested and has piped the Sundell lateral on her property with a 36-inch pipe all the way up to the north. And lastly, concern pertaining to safety of the West Harris Street access to Meridian Road and more traffic generated from the proposed development. Feeling that traffic light should be installed soon. Key issues of discussion by the commission are as follows. Concern pertaining to the fire department emergency response time to the site in the event of an emergency, they can't meet the response time goals that they've set. Applicants request to change the timing for dedication of the well lot to the city. Reference for the Green Belt pathway to be constructed prior to the apartments and last phase of development as currently proposed. Concern pertaining to one main access to the site from West Harris Street via Meridian Road, State Highway 69. Timing of improvements to West Harris Street and the development of Stapleton subdivision to the east, and safety concerns and timing for installation of a traffic signal at the Harris State Highway 69 intersection. And lastly, impacted the proposed development on area schools and the absence of comments from West Ada School District. And we did receive those comments from the school district, and they are in your staff report on the second page or so. Commission made the following changes to the staff recommendation. They modified condition 810 in section nine to allow the well lot to be dedicated to the city after recording of the final plat instead of at the time of final plating, as requested by the applicant. And they included a condition for the multi-use pathway and associated linear open space to be constructed at the end of Phase 2, rather than with the last phase of development. The only outstanding issue for council tonight is, is, is that the commission recommended the pathway and linear open space that I just mentioned to be constructed at the end of Phase 2. This is problematic because the boundary of Phase 2 doesn't touch any portion of the pathway. Therefore, the lot can't be included in the Phase 2 subdivision. The applicant will also speak to the timing for construction of the pathway in her presentation. They'd like it to remain in Phase 4 as originally proposed, and then she'll, she'll cover the reasons why. Written testimony was received since the commission hearing from Jennifer Marer, Chris Gro, Pat McLaughlin, Phil Dugan, Tony Larson. They are all, they are all in support of the project. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonia. Any questions for staff?
Mr. President.
Mr. Strater.
I had a request. I don't know if it's possible, but if you have it available, are you able to point out where this property would be on our draft priority growth areas map?
Mr. President, Councilman Strater, I do not have a copy of that map handy right now. I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you. Will the applicant please come forward? Good evening, Becky. How are you?
Good. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Becky McKay, with Engineering Solutions, business address 1029 North Rosario and Meridian. I'm here this evening representing Star Development on this project before you called Gray Cliff. I think Sonia's
Sorry, Becky.
thinking about bringing it up.
I was trying to get a link to that map that was requested.
Thanks, Sonia. So as you, as you can see, here's an aerial map of the subject property. As Sonia indicated, the, the property lies just here on the south side of Harris Street. The Sundell lateral arcs through the property like this, and then the Tumblr lateral comes along the northern boundary. To the north is Biltmore Estates. It's Phase 1, and 2, and 3 have been constructed. We have Meridian Heights located here, Kentucky Ridge located north of, of Biltmore. This is State Highway 69. Harris Street is the half-mile collector roadway designated on the Ada County Highway District Master Street Map as a future signalized intersection. It's intended that Harris Street will continue on and link to Linder Road, thereby being a half-mile or mid-mile collector roadway. This is, a vicinity map kind of shows you what, what joins us. As I indicated, this is Meridian Heights. This is my client, Biltmore Estates project here. Then we have Brundage Estates, which is also preliminarily platted. And then here, you can see Gray Cliff Estates. The Stapleton subdivision has The Stapleton subdivision has been approved here along the Meridian Road, just on the west side here, called, um, and on the south side of Harris Street. With the Biltmore Estates project, uh, we were required by Idaho Department of Transportation and ACHD to build a turn lane, so there is a southbound turn lane that we constructed for deceleration and turning into Harris Street. We were also required to widen the Harris Street intersection to allow for a left turn bay and a right turn bay. The conditions of approval by Ada County Highway District and the City of Meridian for the Stapleton subdivision is with their Phase Two, they will have to improve the entire south side of Harris Street and build it out to a full collector standard. When it touches our property, we have built it to a collector standard. As you can see, eventually it will go on westward and link up to Linder Road at this location. In the Ada County Master Street Map and within the South Meridian Plan, there is also a south collector roadway which we are accommodating that will go south along the Gray Cliff's western boundary and Brundage Estates eastern boundary, eventually linking down to Amity Road. In your comprehensive plan land use map, there is a designation right here in the middle of the section for a future neighborhood park. When we took Biltmore, Gray Cliff, and Brundage Estates through, uh, we submitted, uh, a design for a neighborhood park. We took that before the Meridian Parks Commission. My client, Mr. Centers, agreed that, um, he would install sprinklers, he would green that park up, and would donate it to the City of Meridian, uh, and he would maintain it until such time as they were ready to take it over. This is the revised preliminary plat that's before you this evening. As Sonya indicated, we came through in two thousand and fifteen. The conditions were considerably different in two thousand and fifteen than they are now in two thousand, or twenty twenty. I can't even keep track of the years, they go by so fast. So with the three projects that Mr. Centers owns, um, he has approximately five hundred and twenty-five lots, or seventy-three percent of his, uh, lots are R four. They range anywhere from, from eight thousand, uh, all the way up to eleven thousand square feet. So when we brought through Gray Cliff in two thousand and fifteen, we thought, okay, we're going to have lots that are around an average of seventy-eight hundred square feet, um, and ranging down to sixty-eight hundred square feet. Well, obviously, market conditions changed, and so then in two thousand and eighteen, Mr. Centers approached me and said, you know, we need to look at this plat because the price for infrastructure, the price for materials, labor, et cetera, is escalating, and I'm really concerned that I won't have what I thought at the time would be considered an affordable product, and we need to make sure that we have diversification between these three projects. So we added approximately fifteen lots, and when we brought it through in two thousand and eighteen, which brought us up to a hundred and thirty-four. Well, in the last two years, what, we've seen a lot of home prices almost double. Labor costs, price for infrastructure escalate, and then the Stapleton project came in, was approved to the east of us, um, with lots that are considerably smaller in the three thousand, four thousand square feet. And so he said, you know, my concern is, when we started our development out here, he said, we had houses that were three fifty to four hundred. He said, I'm building the same house right now, and it's over seven hundred thousand dollars. And so our market share is obviously decreasing as these costs and increase, and so we need to look at our project, and we need to be nimble here and come up with something that, that will appeal to a more affordable buyer, because we're seeing so many residents or future buyers come in and say, I can't afford a house in here, but I love, I love the neighborhoods. So we took a look at this plat, um, and we readjusted it. The adjustments added sixty-six lots. We also increased our open space, our open space in excess of seventeen percent. We included a pool facility, a playground facility. We still have a seventeen, over seventeen hundred linear feet of multi-use pathway. We still propose that there be a neighborhood park here, and so what's before you this evening is what we came up with. This is R forty, as Sonya indicated, designated high-density residential on the comprehensive plan and already zoned R forty. And then the southern portion here, or western portion, whichever way you look at it, is zoned R eight. So we came in and we made adjustments from this being the original plat, as you can see, where we had primarily our open space was centered up here more towards the Harris Street Collector, um, and then we had some open space down here in the midsection to where we've, we've allocated a centrally located open space. We've got micropaths that lead up to the multi-use pathway here. We have micropaths that interconnect these blocks, and then we'll be extending the Harris Street Collector both to the west and then to the south, and then within Brundage, it'll go down to our southern boundary here. This was the conceptual plan that we submitted to the Parks Commission and to the city council when we brought the Brundage Estates through. So we had, um, I think, eight, a little over, we had eight point two-four acres. It was what I call a composite park that lies within Brundage. We have one point six-nine acres that lies within the Gray Cliff, and one acre which lies within the, um, uh, Biltmore Estates project. Now, one of the things that was asked of us, um, when we came through was the City of Meridian said, we need a well lot, and we need it now. So we signed a well lease for ninety-nine years. Well thirty-two was built right here in this triangular lot and is online, and is the second well in what they call Zone Five. The City of Meridian extended a twelve-inch water main up, uh, Meridian Road and down Harris, which loops that. We will also have linkage into the Stapleton subdivision. I had the landscape architect send me the Stapleton subdivision, which you can see how the two projects fit together. So here is Highway sixty-nine, this is Harris Street. We will have a emergency vehicle access that they've provided here. We showed it here, but we'll adjust our building and link it up here. Then we will have a access to Harris here, and then another collector that comes down and accesses here. To meet the fire department requirements, we'll build a temporary emergency vehicle access up to Stapleton or up to Harris Street if that's necessary, if they have not proceeded forward, uh, so that we have access both east of Kentucky Way, which goes down to Victory, and then access to the west. Uh, as far as the fire station, at the time we submitted the project, Fire Station Number Six was still under construction. Fire Station Number Six is going to have their grand opening on Thursday. So we are now two point one miles from the nearest fire station, and when you do Google Maps, uh, from the fire station on Overland, just west of Linder, um, the response time to the intersection of Kentucky Way and Harris is four minutes. So a lot of things have changed. There's sewer. My client brought up to the property, uh, when we did the Biltmore Estates project, we went down to Victory Road. We connected to the sewer and to a twelve-inch water main, brought it up, um, through, uh, Merle Hanson's property, uh, and that allowed for the lagoon, the sewer lagoons that, that, yeah, you remember the sewer lagoons. That allowed for those sewer lagoons that serve both Kentucky Ridge and Meridian Heights to be taken offline and reclaimed. And my client, Mr. Centers, um, worked very diligently. We worked on it for two years, and he paid for all the sewer hookup fees for Meridian Heights and for Kentucky Ridge to make that happen, because they could not afford to pay both sewer and water hookup fees. So my client has, has really been, uh, integral part of making sure that these improvements benefit this section as a whole and not just his project. And he, like I said, with the neighborhood park, that will be public, uh, it's his intent that that will also serve this general area. The pool facility, this kind of is a schematic of what that would look like, uh, be changing rooms, restrooms. So we've upgraded, we've increased our open space, we've upgraded our amenity. This is one that's very similar, um, so we have a photograph that kind of shows you what, what it looks like in reality. These are elevations of, of the proposed homes. A lot of them will be two-car garages, they'll, will have two-story and single-story. Very articulation in the front elevations. Staff has indicated that anything that we have backing up to Harris Street or any other collector, that we will incorporate modulation porches, et cetera, um, obviously to create, you know, character, so that regardless of whether it's the rear or the front elevation, each one of these homes has, uh, an aesthetically pleasing elevation. Here's another kind of two-story, what, what it would look like. So we're incorporating like the crafts, craftsmen's style, plus some modern styles, um, with the windows in the garages, um, and kind of trying to appeal to the marketplace as it changes. So the lots that, that are in this particular project, um, are between forty-two hundred square feet and average out at about forty-six ninety-two. And our overall density is four point eight-nine. I'll finalize it, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. President, sorry. I just got back from vacation, so I got to get back in the hang of things. So our density at four point eight-nine dwelling units is well within the medium-density designation, which is three to eight, uh, on this property. We have a good project, a viable project, and we're trying to improve on what we have here. May I answer any questions?
Thank you, Becky. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Ms. Perot.
Becky, thank you for the great presentation. A couple of questions for you, um, well, three actually. So I wanted to find out if you had calculated the open space without the inclusion of the one point six-nine acres. Just, I have concerns about something that might eventually become a public space being included in our open space calculation, so wondering if you had done a calculation taking that out and if it still meets the ten percent requirement.
Um, Mr. President, Councilman Peralta, we have seventeen percent, over seventeen percent open space within this project. So if you take out that public open space, we would still be within the ten percent.
Okay. And then, um, the fire department, I don't know if you had a chance to read their public, their, their public comments, but they had mentioned that, that even with Fire Station Six and the two-point-one mile distance, that their response time would be about six minutes.
Mr. President, Councilman Peralta, uh, in my conversations with, um, with Joe, he had indicated that he uses Google Maps to determine their response time, which is obviously the average car and based on the speed limit, whereas in the event of a medical emergency or a fire emergency, uh, the optocom kicks in, so all the lights are in the favor of the emergency vehicles, and based on Google, the response time was four minutes. That would be going from Overland and south on Linder, east on Victory, and then south on Kentucky Way would be the most direct route. I guess if Joe went around the horn, if he went east on Overland and then south on State Highway sixty-nine, and then west on Harris, it could extend that timeline. But, um, but the, the project, I mean, like I said, we're within two-point-one miles of a brand-new fire station, so, um, that's, that's pretty close. I, I think when he ranked it, he ranked it, um, they score it, um, and he indicated seventy-eight percent score reliability and target is at eighty, and that was based on a six-minute response from Fire Station Number Six. But like I said, if they go up the Collector roadway, which is Kentucky Way, which will lead directly to this site, it's a four-minute response time.
Mr. President, one more question if I may. So i- in a report, Sonya mentioned, um, the replacement of the pipe, my northwest pipeline, and, and I believe there's some email communication in our public record with staff regarding the, you not being aware, the applicant not being aware of the timing of when that pipeline's going to be replaced, and therefore a request to finish out, um, that pathway in Phase Two. Can you share with us some more details on that and, and maybe give us some background in that conversation?
Um, yes, Mr. President, Councilman Peralta. I've been dealing with the Williams Pipeline since we started this project, well, since we start, started it five years ago. And so I was dealing with their representative, their regional representative back in Salt Lake City, and what he indicated to me is they have different classifications for their pipe. They have what they call agricultural classifications, they have urban classifications. And so what he asked me to do, um, was to send him a map, a vicinity map, showing all of the approved preliminary plats along their pipeline corridor. And what he said is, unfortunately, we are not proactive at the Williams Pipeline. And he said, we, we've asked our superiors to be more proactive due to the excessive growth in Meridian. However, um, by us sending that map, he said, that will help me to get them to start that process, but that process is lengthy. So what they do is they get it into their design schedule, then, once it's designed, then they get it into their, their installation schedule, and he said, you know, I can't give you any definitive timelines. And he said, unfortunately, till the houses go up, we don't go in and upgrade the line. So my concern with the condition as added by the Plan Zoning Commission, that that pathway be installed with Phase Two, is I install, I grass it, put in sprinklers, we put in the ten-foot multi-use pathway, and then Williams Pipeline comes behind me, a year later, two years later, I don't know, and rips it all up, they're not going to replace it. Then we're going to have to do it twice. And so that's why, um, that Williams Pipeline is within that R forty zone, which is the multifamily component or our fourth phase, um, which has to come back as a conditional use permit, um, be approved by the, by the Plan Zoning Commission, um, and design review. And so I don't want to be required to prematurely put that in when they're going to tear it up, and they cannot give me a timeline. And like I said, when the rooftops go up, he said, that's when, unfortunately, that's when we start making plans. And so that's, that's the quagmire that, that we're in. And so that's, that's the quagmire that, that we're in. Also, the, the fact that the pathway really isn't going to go anywhere, it's going to kind of link into the neighborhood park, and then it'll go on and continue through the neighborhood park and link over to Lender. So there's a lot of different components or pieces to that, to that pipeline. So I don't see that it is beneficial, and my client is extremely concerned that he would have to install it twice. So that's why we, we ask that the council allow us to install that with the multifamily component.
Mr. President, sorry, one more question.
Ms. Perot, you're fine.
So then, other than the pool, what access to amenities are these homes going to have? Is the, is the neighborhood park going to be, is that all going to be done at the same time once, once all the lots and the other developments are started? Or is that going to be completed with a certain phase in, in this development?
So what we show here is our central amenity. So that's a pool facility, and there's playground equipment. And the playground equipment was requested by Victoria Laidlaw, that has property along the south, who we've coordinated with. You know, when we've already piped that Sundell lateral that arc through this property, it's already piped along, along this open space here. My client is filling in the old canal, and then he will be installing a fence and then installing the drainage pipe, coordinating with Victoria. And so this will be the central amenity, and I think that's in our first phase, isn't it, Sonia?
I'm not sure if it's first or second. I think it's first, Becky, but I do have a phasing plan, I think, in my presentation.
I think it's, I think it's the first phase. I believe this, this is in the first phase. So they'll have a playground and a pool facility with, with this project. And as far as construction of the park, we didn't want to do it piecemeal. We do have a conceptual plan that we submitted to the Parks Commission that they liked. And what Mr. Centers said is he wanted to build that all as one, one component, not just piecemeal. Staff has in the condition that in the event that the council doesn't want this as a public park, then we would make it a private park. So that will, that will be a park, whether it be private or public. It is part of our development agreement. And so we would hold off on, on this part until, until we move, kind of move westward.
Mr. President, follow-up. So that being said, it could be quite some time, potentially years, before the, those homeowners would have access. Obviously, it's going to take a few years to build out those, those homes, but it, it could be quite some time before they have access to the, the pathway or the, or the park.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then could you talk to us a little bit, is there going to be pathway connectivity between Stapleton, the multifamily, and Gray Cliff? Are they all, there's, there's going to be pathways interconnected so that the, is there intention that the homeowners in Stapleton be able to access the park as well?
Yes. So Stapleton, you can see that the pipeline traverses their corner here. So they'll be building their section of the multi-use pathway. Then they have micro-pass that are coming in here, here, and we will interconnect with them. So the multi-use pathway will come through here. This is a 75-foot corridor. It's all grassed. We can put some benches in, but they won't allow us to put trees. So we did get alternative compliance so that the trees that we are not allowed to install along the pathway will install in the park here. And then there'll be interconnection right here, vehicular interconnection, which will also be pedestrian interconnection into the here. And then we, they have some, will have connections where they can link in so they can come through here, come into the multifamily and come in and catch that pathway, go on and interconnect to Lender eventually, or come over to the neighborhood park here at the center of the section.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Councilwoman Strader.
Thank you, Ms. McKay, for coming. Could you please talk about, one of my biggest concerns is with the West Ada School District, and we're experiencing a lot of overcrowding. I realize that's not strictly speaking your problem, but it is a community problem that we all share. Can you talk about the timeline for constructing this project, the expected absorption or delivery of units, and how that fits in with the letter that we received from West Ada?
Mr. President, Councilwoman Stradler, Strader, you're new. I gotta get used to all the newbie, newbies. Initially, when I was planning this pro, these three projects for Mr. Centers, I did meet with the school district. I asked the school district if they had any intentions of an elementary within this section, and they indicated to me no. And that's why then we opted for the neighborhood park, because we felt we wanted some type of public space in the center of this section. The middle school is located off of, what is it?
Stafford.
Stafford, Stafford. They built the new middle school there at Fall Creek. Fall Creek was one of my projects. I was a part of, of facilitating that middle school. So they do have a new middle school within this vicinity. But they had told me that they didn't want an elementary within this section. And so any, anytime I have projects of any significant size, I always meet with the school district. And obviously, you know, they're growing again, and my meetings with them, they've indicated, Joe Yocum's indicated to me that they have certain areas that are priority. They needed like a new elementary in North Eagle, which I'm incorporating in one of my projects there off Beacon Light. And, and he said that, you know, they're, they're seeing that a lot of the charter schools and some of the new private schools are taking a lot of those elementary kids. And so their anticipated growth model has been significantly below where they anticipated it. So I think they're kind of in a plant, new planning process here, too, to figure out where they want these new elementaries to go and, and what are the best locations. So we do work closely with them.
Mr. President, just a follow-up. I appreciate the, the background information and that you, you had, had offered up the, the land for an elementary school. Just curious, when, when was that conversation and did you revisit that discussion at all? And this project obviously has been in the works since at least before 2015.
Five years ago, yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Just curious if you revisited their temperature about the neighborhood school?
I, I talked with Joe multiple times about where they're, where they see the, the need for school sites. And of course, elementaries have to be typically a minimum of nine, they like nine acres now. They want them as a donation, they want them on collectors. So he did not indicate that they needed something in this general vicinity. You talked about the phasing of this project. This is a four-phase project. And so the Biltmore project that Mr. Centers built up here that's R-4, like I said, those are like 11,000 square foot average lot size. We're on our third phase, and that project was approved prior to Gray Cliff, prior to 2015. So he usually builds a phase a year. So you can see a four, you know, a four-phase project go a four, over a four-year period, which obviously allows for time to identify a school, possibly pass a school, or school site and pass a school bond. But, you know, we, we as the development community, you know, we work with the district as much as possible to, to assist them because schools are integral, just as parks and pathways and amenities are integral.
Thank you.
President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Becky, dovetailing a little bit off Councilmember Strader's comments and questions. I went back to the letter from Joe and Joe Yocum at the school district, and they've indicated that your residents are going to go to middle school, are going to go to Meridian Middle School.
I saw that.
Which is on Eighth. Pretty far distance away from that middle school that's right down the street. So in your conversation with Joe, can you help us understand why we're busing students across the interstate to an overcapacity middle school?
Mr. President, Councilwoman Cavanagh, I, I was surprised that, that that was Meridian Middle when the closest middle school is just a hop and a skip.
Yes, ma'am.
So I have not had that conversation with Joe. I was surprised to see that, and I did not notice that before I went to the Plan Zoning Commission, but I did notice it in my preparation before the council meeting this evening.
Mr. President. Mr. Hoagland.
Becky, I wanted to follow up a little more on, on fire access. I know once the streets are connected up and access is made complete, there's, there's going to be, I think, adequate response time. But the timing of things for, you know, we like to have more than just one point of access.
Yes.
For fire. So can you walk me through the timing of these developments and what those access points look like and when they might occur for emergency vehicles?
Mr. President and Councilwoman Hoagland, I'd be glad to. So we will extend Harris Street down here. The first phase of the project will be located, I believe, in this area here. And what Joe's letter indicated was we'll be capped at 30 dwelling units unless we can have a secondary access. So the secondary access would be, we'd come out here and then connect to Stapleton, or we can come out and bring a temporary 20-foot-wide, all-weather gravel access road that can handle 75,000 GVW out here to Harris so that we, it would have to be east of Kentucky Way. And that, that's kind of the plan. I have a stub street right here that links in to the parcel just south of Stapleton, but Ada County Highway District in their staff report does not want that public street connection there. They're wanting these residents to come out to Harris and come out to the Signal instead of potentially cutting through and coming out to an unsignalized intersection at Stapleton because they do have a direct access. I believe it's a right-in, right-out, left-in only. So ACHD, just for the record, is asking me to eliminate that stub street right there at the southeast corner.
So, Mr. President, follow-up. So Becky, it sounds like you do the first phase, and if, you know, we know the economy, all these different factors that come into play, that if you want to continue and you don't have that R-40 development underway, you do have an act, a temporary access, secondary access point.
Yes, sir.
To Harris that would allow for that.
And we, we are allowed to do that. I have another project on McDermott where, where Joe, we sent him what we were proposing, and he had indicated that that would be acceptable as a temporary interim secondary access. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes. We, we have to get his approval.
Mr. President, I was just going to point out, I think the city clerk has found the map that I requested previously, if others are interested in looking at it. And we were just looking at our future land use map, and it looked like there might be a school located near, nearby, so I just wanted to see if we can get some clarification.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Just for council's benefit, at least it looks like, and maybe Becky can speak to this, it looks like that West Ada has an elementary school planned near the corner, it looks like Overland and Lender Road slated to be called Blue Valley Elementary. And, Mr. President, this is a 2016 document that I'm looking at, and so, I mean, things have shifted and changed, but it does speak to, at least there's land that they have apparently already owned, they could do an elementary should the funding be available.
Mr. President.
Mr. President, to add to that, what Councilman Cavanagh just said, that's their planned bond for May, it's for that school.
While we're on the subject of, of the fire department, Chief Butterfield, do you have any comments to be made in regard to your department and, and also access and, and response times?
Council President Byrne, I, I believe that the comments that have been made here on the record are, they do coincide with the notes that I have received from Chief Bonjorno. As far as the four-minute travel time to the entry to the subdivision is what he had in his notes to me. And also what Councilman Hoagland had mentioned, too, about the additional access and the 30-home requirement for a single-point access. Anything over 30 structures would need an additional access are also on the notes that I have from Chief Bonjorno as well. So for the record, those are accurate.
And Chief, in regard to the temporary secondary access, is that something that the department is okay with?
Yes, as noted by Chief Bonjorno, as long as we had access stipulated by him and the fire code to have that ability to get to that area, that second means of egress with a, and he will outlay what that road looks like. He has code that shows what that is. But yeah, that would be the, the need for the building of any additional more than 30 homes with a single-point of access.
Okay. Any other questions for Becky before?
Mr. President.
Yes, Ms. Perot.
Ms. McKay, so then is this, the north half of that Collector Street on the west side going to be finished out with Phase Two?
The, you mean, right here, the south half?
No, on the west side, the Collector that goes north and south.
The north, south.
Oh, this side.
Yes.
Yes, we have to build that, we have to build that with Phase Two, yes. And then we'll also be trust funding for a Signal at Harris and Highway 69. Stapleton is also trust funding, and so is Kavanaugh Ridge. And then ACHD has indicated to me that they will evaluate the warrant when that Signal can go in, but everybody's participating.
All right, thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
We reached the time for public testimony. Mr. Clerk, do we have any signups?
Mr. President, we have one advanced signup, Brett Hughes.
So I just wanted to basically just come, kind of come in, just say that basically what we've seen from L-2.
Sorry, excuse me, Mr. Hughes.
Would you please state your address as well for the record? Yeah, 1137 West Back Forty, Eagle Lido. Basically, so they have done a really, really good job at L-2. So I represent Cabin Ridge, which is the development that's on Meridian and Victory. And we have a lot of people who just simply can't afford that product. And a lot of it has to do with like building costs and then lot prices, every single phase of lot prices have gone up. And so it's been more costly each time. But at the, at the same time, like what I've seen from L-2 and from the quality of construction they have, especially during their parade homes and also Oakwood itself, it's just such a high-quality product. And I think that's a lot different than what some of the things we see on smaller lots. And so basically, I just wanted to come and just kind of, just say that I support projects like this because there's such a big need for it, and they have done such a great job, especially if you look up their parade homes and, and then even just drive through some of the communities, they have a lot of attention to detail, especially the architectural detail as opposed to like just kind of slapping up things. They have like great modern design, craftsman design, all sorts of great things there. Thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
Mr. President, that was everyone that signed in in advance. There may be additional.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Mr. President, members of council, thank you for seeing me today. My name is Cody Stogur. I'm here representing the developer and builder team for Great Cliff Estates. I work directly for L2 Construction. I just wanted to introduce you to a little bit of the product that we're going to be introducing to this area and why it's important. Who are we? L2 Construction is a second-generation Treasure Valley developer and builder team, and we are, we're privileged to be born and raised here in Meridian, Idaho, and we're grateful for the opportunity to provide a unique homebuilding experience that aims to meet the needs and wants of our growing community. My role within L2 Construction, I, I focus on community completion, so I'm, I deal with clients from, from contact to close. I hold an open house eight hours a day, five days a week. I interact with thousands of prospective buyers every year. I qualify those clients, I assist in the purchase and build, and most importantly, what I do is I build buyer profiles. So, the development team comes to me and says, hey, what type of people are we dealing with and what type of product do we need to move into? And Meridian buyer needs are pretty clear. We need more affordable housing. That's not a question, we all know that. And how are we going to get that? We're going to get that with more inventory. Meridian also needs quality, safe, and thoughtfully designed communities that offer more options for a larger percent of residents. Not everyone can afford what's being built right now. Another important factor is what, what the buyers want, right? We care about what the buyers want. They want quality and affordable. We all know that that doesn't necessarily always go hand in hand. It's a staple with what we do at L2. They want thoughtfully designed communities and unique, modern designs, no more cookie-cutter developments. So many people that I talk to every single day come to us because we do have those unique, modern elements, and Southwest Meridian's booming right now. That's, that's no question. This is the big scary number that everyone's referring to, 419, 440. I just wanted to put everything in perspective for you guys. That is the Ada County new construction median sales price for January 2020, right now in Ada County, 419, 440. We're shooting for that, for, for the 350 range. That's driven by, oh, sorry, guys. That number right there is driven by the low amount of inventory. In order to get that price down, we just have to build more homes. Boise State University Idaho Policy Institute puts on a survey, surveys focused on growth in the Treasure Valley, and a couple of really interesting housing takeaways. 67.5% of respondents are very concerned about the increased cost of living associated with gross, growth in the Treasure Valley, and even more interestingly, a majority of people, up to 66% of people, don't believe that they would be able to find comparable housing if, if they, if they had to leave their current housing. So, that's where we come in. We care a lot about this community, and as our community grows, we're dedicated to maintaining what makes Meridian special, it's the community. It's this community that keeps us dedicated to providing a unique building experience for the families we serve. On this endeavor, we will always remember that new homes are a profession, but forging relationships along the way is our passion. Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Cody. I got a question for you real quick.
Absolutely.
I appreciate you, and I appreciate L2 Construction and, you know, being a Meridian company and being loyal to the area, it's awesome. Appreciate that. Love your presentation.
Thank you.
Good info. You know, we get that the, the, the cost of housing has gone up substantially. I, I think it's, I got a question. So, so you, you say that these homes are going to be roughly plus or minus $350,000?
That's our goal, yes.
So, you think that that, are you saying that, are you considering that affordable housing, or are you just saying it's less expensive than the other guys?
It's less expensive, and I would, I would, at this point, I would consider it affordable, yes.
All right. Basically, the same house, just smaller. I know we're getting the weeds, but I just think it's, I would, I would, I would say that it's less expensive. I certainly wouldn't consider a $350,000 house affordable housing, just.
Mr. President, that's fair.
Right. Okay. I have some other questions, but I'll, I'll wait and see what my fellow councilmembers have to say.
Mr. President, Joey, one of the things I, I guess I really applaud about L2 is, and you, you speak to this in your presentation, build relationships with your customers. Curious, what impact do schools have on your customers? I mean, I, I only look back to what we would hear years ago, that people chose Meridian because parks, pathways, schools.
Sure.
All those people have moved here, and now our schools, I mean, I think our schools have always been packed, but specifically where development is occurring is hitting schools that are, are maxed out. So, trying to figure out how you guys wrestle with building a relationship with your customers, which, at least from my perspective, a value element is in contrast to where we are and how you guys navigate that and what you're hearing from your customers.
So, Mr. President, Councilman Cavanagh, we deal with a, a different demographic right now than we're going to be dealing with in Great Cliff Estates, we believe. And again, we don't know exactly how things will play out. The feedback that I get, for the most part, and I'll, I'll just be candid with you if I can, most, most of who we build for now, it's a lot of people who are retired. There's not a lot of kids in our current developments. There will be in our future developments, and that's why I think Becky spoke to the importance of working directly with the school district while we're, while we're developing all of this and make sure we're meeting the needs of our incoming clients. Does that answer your question?
Mr. President, you guys aren't proposing though like a 55 and above or a 65 and above community. I mean, these are single-family homes that'll be open to families of all shapes, sizes, and age demos. You're just not hearing from, you're just usually saying that you're not seeing customers with families that are moving into these types of products? I mean, when we talk affordable housing, to me, that, that goes line in line with young families that are going to be able to afford a home, so.
Sure.
I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to wrestle with how we, we're building an affordable home for retirees that aren't going to have kids.
Sure.
At $350,000.
Mr. President, Councilman Cavanagh, we're currently not able to provide, it's a wide range, right?
Okay.
We do have clients that do have children, and in my profession, I can't speak too much on it because of fair housing laws, so I can't sell based on who lives where. But right now, we're not really appealing to that crowd, but I would say by and large, Meridian is made up of a large number of families, and that is who we're trying to appeal to with this price point and trying to get the price down.
Got it. Please, Cody.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else in the public that would like to offer up their testimony to us this evening? Good? Okay. Becky, do you want to come back up and finish it off?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, Becky McKay. I'd just like to say, you know, we, as a develop, development community, we have to be flexible, we have to watch the marketplace. I don't think any of us expected the trajectory that we're seeing with the cost of infrastructure, labor, materials. I mean, you know, it used to be you could, the infrastructure cost for a lot was $15,000. Now, I have a project in Meridian that the infrastructure cost per lot is $60,000. It has some off-site sewer costs, so it's escalated it, and it's not a very big project. So, we are struggling with trying to meet the demands of this community and, and like Councilman Cavanagh indicated, you know, we have empty nesters, we have young families. We, we need to provide a variety of housing, and when you have an 11,000-square-foot lot or a 9,000-square-foot lot, the cost for the lot obviously warrants a higher cost for the home, and that's why we're seeing those lots, then the finished cost being 500, 550, 600, 700,000. So, what we're trying to do is we're trying to have lots that are like around 4,600 square feet so that then we can get those costs down, we can get that infrastructure cost down because we're spreading it across a number of lots. You know, our, our previous density, I think Sonya indicated, was 3.23 dwelling units per acre. We're asking for 4.89. We're still obviously on that lower end of that three to eight. We're doing what I, what we can to adjust to the marketplace, and I think if we don't react and we just sit there, we're going to have a lot of projects that their sales are going to decline because only a small percentage of the citizens of Meridian or those moving in can afford those homes. And so, like I told you, 73% of Mr. Centers' project is R4, so we're talking, what you're seeing here is 27% of his project. So, diversity is integral in your comprehensive plan, and that's what we're striving for. We're boosting our open space percentage up to 17, over 17%. We're boosting our amenities, our playground, we're putting in a pool, we're still doing our 1,762 linear feet, we're still planning on doing our neighborhood park. So, you know, this particular project is, is, is a good component in this section. Mr. Centers is going, is building the Collectors, he wants to build the park out, he's brought the sewer and the water, he paid all those hookup fees to help make this happen because he had a vision, he had a dream. My job is to keep that vision and that dream going, and I think the council is the same. You guys have to be nimble and flexible to see the future, and we have to make changes because things change, conditions change. We're in compliance with the comp plan, staff's recommended approval, Plan of Zoning Commission's recommended approval. I think we've got a good project. We want, we're excited to build it. These, this is a Meridian builder. They pride themselves on quality, exterior and interior, and like Mr. Centers said, walk through our houses and walk through others' houses, and there's a huge difference, and we're proud of that. And so, I ask that you support this project and approve it this evening, and please don't make us build that pathway before the Williams Pipeline goes in and does the upgrade. Thank you. May I ask, answer any questions?
What about the park? Would you build a park? I mean, would you, would you be open, would Mr. Centers, would, would he be open to including that, that, that future public park? Would, would he be open to the idea of building it or developing it during the first or second phase of this project?
You mean the portion, the?
Little small guy.
There's the 1.69 acres. He, he had told the, the Parks Commission that he would install sprinklers, he'd green it up. We have to have tree mitigation, so, you know, we, we obviously don't want to put in anything that's going to get tore out, so I, before I would want to agree to make those improvements, I'd want to go back to the Parks Commission, and we need to do an agreement with the Parks Department, I guess, in order to facilitate that, and so that's why staff has in there that whether it's public or whether it's private, responsibility is ours to green it up. So, Lee J., oh, there's Lee. The 1.69 acres. He said he would prefer to build it all as one. That was his preference. It'd be more cost-effective. And, and like I said, we want to make sure that the Parks Commission, obviously those people on that commission change, and so our concept plan was done by our landscape architect. They may want to, they gave us examples to use of the neighborhood parks like Champion Park and then another park, and that was our template, but they may have new ideas. So, if we green it up, we might go in and then have to tear up the landscaping in the, in the irrigation facilities if they change their mind on how they want it configured. And I think, Sonya, if you want to put that back up?
I guess to, to expound on my point, I, I don't think anyone would, you know, expect to, to build buildings or do anything too incredibly extensive to that property, but maybe.
Yeah.
Just do, you know, green it up and, you know, and put a little sprinkler in there if they have to move something around a little bit, I don't think it'd be a huge deal. I think, I think that the residents enjoy a little bit more open space to, to play and recreate, open it up a little bit, just my, just my opinion.
I think your cursor's gone wacko. I'm trying to highlight it, but it won't let me. What's going on, Sonya? What's going on, Chris? There it is, okay. So, what we're talking about here is that arrow's in the 1 point, that's the 1.69 acres right there where my arrow was. And so, that was, we had the, the parking area, we had the shelter, the restrooms. That was the template in which the Parks Department asked us to utilize. However, the final design is subject.
Sure.
To their approval. And so, what we were going to do is green it up, put in the sprinkler system, hook it into our pressurized irrigation until such time as then they're ready to make the permanent improvements like the restrooms, the playground and so forth. Now, we're going to have our own amenities, I guess, you know, my thought is we're building a playground within our project, centrally located within our Phase One, and a pool facility. So, we're going to have activities in there. That's almost going to be in addition to that.
Mr. President.
Ms. Perrow.
Have you done any, Becky, have you done any calculation on the difference in homeowners' association costs with that park going public or with it staying private? And, you know, if, if at the time that the applicant would prefer for the city to take it over, the city decides it's not in its budget to maintain the park and they want to delay, or they decide they, they don't want to take it into the city after all, what does that mean for the homeowners in terms of their costs with their association dues?
Mr. President, Councilman Perrow, we, I don't think we have ran the numbers like on a per-lot basis what that would be, but Mr. Centers did make the commitment to the Parks Commission that he would maintain it until such time as their budget would allow for them to take it over.
That's at the cost of the homeowners, correct?
That is correct, and we did that with the Champion Park. When we did Champion Park, it was, it's a neighborhood park. The developers said, we'll put in the sprinklers, we'll go ahead and we will seed it with your, the required seed mix that the Parks Department has, or, or, you know, likes, and then we built the parking lot. And then the Parks Department, as their budget allowed, then they went in and constructed the restrooms. I think they constructed a playground, basketball, and then I think we put the path, we put the pathways in. So, we work kind of, that would be part of that Parks Agreement, and that would be based on their budget. And in our discussions, it was brought up that obviously their focus is on the regional park that's out in South Meridian, that they've got a lot of dollars that are going to be spent out there, and so that's when Mr. Centers said, you know, I'll green it up, I'll put the sprinklers in, we'll maintain it until such time as your budget allows you to take it over and make the permanent improvements.
Mr. President.
We have, we have Garrett from the Parks Department. Do you mind if he just takes just a couple of seconds?
Absolutely not.
Sort of explain what you're talking about?
Sure.
Garrett, can you come up here and? Thank you, Garrett, sorry to put you on the spot, man.
Mr. President, members of, members of the council, my notes here show that exactly what Ms. McKay was saying, yes, all this is delivered, are going to be decided on an agreement, right? That we meet with them and talk with them about it. It is staff's plan to reach out to them and get that agreement going when it comes to greening it up as well, obviously, in this irrigation system. I know one of the notes back from 2016, when you guys first went to the commission, was just one of our, I'll say concerns was, we just need to make sure we have ample water for our water in the evenings and stuff like that at the park. But yes, Mr. Centers exactly, does, said exactly what Ms. McKay said regarding that, and when it comes to budget, we talked about that, and our CFP right now, I'm going to say placeholder, just because I don't know the actual dollar amount that's in there right now, but we have placeholders for design in FY '25 with construction FY '26. Again, budgets haven't been talked about, it's all up to, you know, council's discretion on what budgets we get during that time, it's still a few years out, but like I said, that was just a placeholder. It's still a few years out, but like I said, that was just a placeholder per the notes that I got this afternoon from our Parks Superintendent. So, hopefully that helps answer some questions.
Mr. President, a quick follow-up for the Parks Department. One of my concerns that I was trying to understand was to make sure that if, if we approve this development modification, at, at the end of the road, we're going to end up with this open green space, whether it's a private park or a public park. And I just wanted to make sure that, that the park's future existence is not dependent on the approval of other parcels that I'm not seeing in front of me that are future phases. So, if you know about that, if you could speak to that, or if not, maybe the applicant?
Mr. President, Councilman Strater, I can't necessarily speak to that myself. I would assume that it would come in the agreement that we would work with Mr. Centers and the applicant regarding that. I do know, like I said, staff's wanting to reach out to them here soon to talk about that agreement.
Perfect. Thanks, Garrett.
Mr. President, Councilman Strater. So, to your concern about, about the park in its entirety, all of the components are part of development agreements and previously approved projects. So, these are not future projects that have not gone through council approval. All these development agreements say that each one of these projects will allocate one point six-nine acres, one acre, eight point two-nine acres, for a total combined of ten point some odd acres. And as the gentleman from the Parks Department indicated, in that Parks Agreement, we've kind of drug our feet on that because we were kind of waiting to, you know, kind of move the project forward, this Gray Cliff. But we will start those conversations with your Parks Department, get that agreement in place that will set forth timing, budgeting, responsibilities, and then obviously that have to be approved by, by the Parks Commission, and I assume it comes to go, come to the council. And so, we have conditions that specify that. And in the event that agreement cannot be formed, then we have to maintain it as private open space. So, it's open space one way or the other.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Okie-doke, council. Do we want to have a little discussion before we close the public hearing, or do you want to close the public hearing? What would you guys like to do?
Mr. President?
Ms. Pro.
I think with, with many moving pieces, it might be best for us to leave it open in case we have more questions for the applicant.
Sure.
Mr. President?
Ms. Strater, I was looking the wrong direction. I apologize.
I am willing to kick off the discussion?
Kick it off.
Okay. On the one hand, well, a few things are aligning well, I think, with how we're looking at development. We did see it as in a priority growth area. It appears that Station Six can service it from a fire perspective with an adequate response time, I hope. That for me is a pretty key component of the decision. So, I, I would, I would personally like to get a little more feedback than just a general statement that, you know, Google Maps, I kind of want to, I want to see some follow-up on the fire component. What I think the applicant has done really well, they have designed a project that fits well to me within the community, and that they really strive to connect services and, you know, get the well, get the pathway, get a neighborhood park. I applaud all of that effort. I think that's really helpful. We have already invested in the infrastructure here in this part of Meridian in terms of a sewer line and sewer trunk, so I think that all makes sense. The, the piece that I am struggling a lot with is the school piece. The, the letter from West Ada to me did not provide enough information. I feel like it told us we have schools that are over capacity. We've heard they have a plan in their next bond to build Blue Valley Elementary. It sounds like the absorption coming from this project would happen over time, and I would hope that that bond would be approved and that elementary school could take up part of the capacity. We also have the middle school and the high school to think about. I, personally, where I'm sitting, I almost am leaning toward getting a continuance to get more information from West Ada. I don't feel like the information we've received is adequate for me to feel comfortable on the school's part of the decision, which for me is one of the two main focuses. That's just where, that's just my initial thought. I think it's a good project. I'm leaning toward approving it if I feel like there is a school that in the future would support the new students, and that West Ada could walk us through how this project over time gets absorbed into their plans for future schools, what the thought process is, and I think the applicant would probably appreciate also knowing exactly what middle school the folks may be attending in this project. Doesn't seem to make a ton of sense to be bussed far away. I, I would like to have, I would like to put a little bit of pressure or a little bit of a request on West Ada to give us more information before we make a decision.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavanagh?
There's somebody in the public that I think is wanting to at least speak to, I assume maybe something related to the schools. I, I just wanted to put that to your attention as someone who's running the meeting, just so you're aware.
Thank you. I did not see that. You're more than welcome to come up. Just know that I'll have to, we'll have to give Becky another, give her a chance to rebut, so.
Thank you, Mr. President and councilmembers. I am a resident, five-seven-three, West Oak Springs Drive, in the Bitmore Estates. I do have a child, stepchild that is going to...
Ma'am, please state your name if you would.
Sorry, my name is Suzie Haddable.
Thank you.
So, I do have a stepchild that's going to Centennial with a split custody agreement, so that isn't any factor. But I do have an eighth grader that goes to Victory Middle School there, and we have just found out that he will now attend Meridian instead of Mountain View, which was, when we actually bought the house, we were told it would be Mountain View, so the boundaries got changed. Meridian High School is quite a ways from us, and so, if he missed the bus in the morning, or that's going to be quite a way across town. My husband is a pilot, so he's gone a lot. So, that's going to put a lot of, you know, pressure on me as well to get all the way across town like that. So, I don't know when the boundaries got changed and on what premise they did, but also, he does have quite a hike to get to the bus stop in the morning also. So, he does have to walk quite a ways to the bus stop and home because of where we are. So, I did just want to put that out there, that, you know, we do have an eighth grader going into high school this year that, and it is an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. President? I do also want to thank the applicant for her testimony that is compelling for the lender overpass.
Yes.
So, thank you.
We talked about that, we talked about that in our earlier meeting.
Becky, would you like to have any, would you like to come back up? Are you okay? Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Holton?
To address the school issue, I, I think it's, it's certainly something we have to pay attention to. I did look at that letter, and it was dated February fourth, so I think that was before our meeting with the school board. So, hopefully in the future, we get better information. I, I think that, that was something that was our message to them on, to help us in our decision-making because it does impact families. I know when I moved my family back east for, ended up four years, you know, looking for a place to live, and one of the things with the school-aged children, you know, going to the school, trying to figure out, is this where they're going? Is this a good school? What's the vibe? You know, what's the neighborhood like? All, all those things. And it certainly has an impact if, if this subdivision moves forward as, as planned, and people come to check it out, and they're finding out that, oh, your children are going to be bussed to not this school, but they're going there. That will factor into the decision, you know? It's, it's unfortunate, and I understand the last testimony there because the same thing happened to us in the late nineties when, living off of Eustach Road, and, and our son was ready to enter middle school, and Meridian Middle School is two miles away. And we get a letter saying that, oh, because of overcrowding, different things, he's going to Eagle. And Eagle, I mean, Lowell Scott is four miles away. We're going to Eagle. And you make decisions based on that. And it ended up, our son went to private school. We were not going to send him, that was not our community. Nothing wrong with Eagle schools, it's just the fact that...
Shots fired.
You know? That, that long drive, and it's not our community. Nice people, I know people there, but just not where you're going to be socializing and doing things. So, there's always those pros and cons, but those, I think, are, are the decisions that the parents have to, have to decide with the information that, that's there. And, and I think a lot will depend on this bond issue coming up in May. What's going to be happening? And a lot of parents will have to make some, some, some difficult decisions. I, I, I think when I look at this development, it's, it is, it is well-done, it's well-planned, it's, it's meeting a need, it's trying to hit a market that is i- in the middle right now. To your point, Councilman Burnt, it's, it's not affordable housing, but it's, it's what we considered affordable housing, something we could afford way back when, when we bought our house, is now one of those really expensive homes. And it's like, how did that happen? And can I afford the property taxes? But I, I, I think when I look at the, the cost of the land for the park, that the ten acres would be if our Parks Department had to purchase it now, that's a significant contribution by the developer to, to our community, and, and we probably need a park in that area. The improvements to the pipeline for the pathway, and that's one I, I kind of want to throw out there for, for discussion. Having dealt with Williams Pipeline when I served previously on council, they are slower to get to things, and this is not the first time that a developer has talked about the difficulty in them moving quickly or moving at all. So, that is something, I, I don't want to force them into spending money on something that just gets completely torn up and, and not, so I'd, I'd be comfortable with having that at, at, I think they're, remain at Phase Four instead of one of the earlier phases. You know, we, the current residents out there need a light at Harris. Highway sixty-nine traffic continues to build. We know Kuna's growing like crazy, and they use that road to get to the freeway. Having a light there, and it's unfortunate, but you need development. You need that mass to get that, for ITD to approve that light. So, that is something that I, I think would be benefit to current folks as well as, as future ones. And I, I think overall, of course, I, I go back, one of the hardest issues I've ever had to face on council was the Meridian Heights and that area, and Mr. Stewart Public Works was working on that as well. The difficulty we had when a county subdivision that had been approved with a pond, and that system started to fail. And they needed the city to step in. And the, the difficulty of that, when the residents didn't have the ability to, to pay the total cost, and it was expensive, as, as we know, infrastructure's expensive. And for our resolve to not charge current taxpayers, people who are already in Meridian to pay for that. They, they didn't cause that. That wasn't their decision to acquire that pond, all these different things, and, and to have someone step in, as Mr. Centers did, to be involved in that, to, to make things happen, was the only way that thing was going to get done. And, and to me, that just demonstrates there's community mindedness, there's the opportunity that when something is said that's going to be done, it's, it's going to be done. And that, that gives me a comfort level that the project that is being proposed and how it's going to happen and come about, I think, is, is something that we can, we can, I, I can know with confidence that it, it will happen that way. So, you know, I, I, I have no discomfort in moving forward with, with this project, and certainly open to other, other issues and items that we might have to address in it, but that's, that's my thoughts on it.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavanagh?
And I, I echo so many Councilmember Hoagland's comments. I, I look back to when my family and I moved five years ago, and this would be the exact type of thing that we would want to go and move into. It's, I, I think that the builder team commented, they, they create community, and I think that's so much what we look for in, in Meridian. My hesitation is right in line with Councilmember Strater. Becky, I think, I think you got some bad data from West Ada, to be honest. I can't imagine that we're going to, we got a middle school quarter, half mile away that we're going to drive past that to send kids to Meridian Middle School. I, I would want to get that question answered before I'd be comfortable moving forward. Frankly, I think the other big question is, what are we going to do with elementary kids over there? You know, the bond passes, I think you're looking great. Bond doesn't, where are we going to put these kids? I mean, that, the, the south side, because of the growth, and you comment, I think both you commented on it, is just on fire. I think you said you were, it's blowing up in the south side, and I live on the south side, and it is. But it's really impacting our, our elementary schools. We don't have spots for the kids. So, those, those are the two big pieces that cause me pause. I think that at least if we could get our hands wrapped around the middle school piece, I'd feel greater comfort. So, I'm supportive of, of continuing it to a later point in time. If anything, so that you can, you can call Joe and say, "Really? We're going to send him to Meridian Middle School?" And he's going to say, "No, no, that was, that was a mistake. Here's, we're going to send him to Victory, and here's what the capacity is." And that would make me feel better.
Mr. President?
Ms. Pro.
I, I agree with Councilman Cavanagh. I, I, I'm in favor of continuing and waiting to get some more information from the school district, and the bond not passing, I mean, that's, it's just an unknown we don't have, but it's significant to this application. I'm, I'm very concerned that we will recreate what is going on right now with Century Farm in Sky Mesa, because the level of number, and this is, this is eight hundred-plus homesites right here, and that are going to be built in a short amount of time, and they are really struggling. And I, what I, my, my, my hope would be that we don't, if the bond passes, we build a school in a couple of years that we're not full the first year like we experienced Hillsdale Elementary. I mean, we still, there's still that element that could happen even if the bond does pass. So, I, I most definitely think that we need some more specific comments from West Ada, and I'm feeling a little discomfort regarding the fire response times, and, and I was surprised when I read the report from the Fire Department that we're only two miles away, we have a six-minute response time. So, I really would like to get more clarification from, from Mr. Bonjourno on, or I think he's the one that wrote that letter. If, I mean, if, even if he isn't able to be present at the meeting where, that we continue it to, that if, if he could write in something that will give us more specifics on, on how that, how that time, timing came to be, I would appreciate that information as well.
A little, a little clarity on the, on the, on the fire issue in regard to response time. I don't know if extra density is going to create faster response time from the Fire Department. I mean, for a little clarity, this, this preliminary plat has already been approved. They're just, and so, if, if we hypothetically said this evening, this isn't going to happen, I don't know if that necessarily, in fact, I don't think it changes how quick the Fire Department is going to be able to get a fire truck to this subdivision. So, I don't know if that's really going, going to change a whole lot at the end of the day, just for a little clarity, but...
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just, I want to continue the discussion on if, if we, if we delay this, and, and we hear from the school district, and they say, yes, students are going to be, middle school students will go to Meridian Middle School, okay? I, I, I don't know what that extra information would, would, would do. Does that mean, because again, I, I go back to the, the market aspect of this. If a prospective buyer, these are new homes, that comes in and finds out that their kid would be going to Meridian Middle School, then that's their, their choice. If they don't, say, nope, that's too far away, then they can, they can purchase a home somewhere else. I, I, you know, that's just how, how I view it. I, I just don't know how the delay in getting that information will change anything. And if the, I won't get into the bond issue, but anyway, I, I'm just curious. Help, help me understand that, where we would go with that information.
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
I, I was just going to add from the legal perspective. So, remember that the Fire Department response times are goals, they're not code.
Right.
So, it, it, whether it's four minutes or six minutes, and you're exactly right, doesn't matter. All this is, is a DA modification.
Right.
So, this property's already annexed.
Right.
It's already entitled. So, they can build homes now, they're just asking to increase the number of homes.
Exactly.
So, totally within your discretion, but I would agree with Councilman Hoagland. Where they go to school, whether it's a hundred and thirty-six home or two hundred homes, is still the school district prerogative, whether they are going to go to Meridian Middle or Victory. Again, it's all capacity and enrollment, so we all understand that. But this one's a slightly different, this is not an annexation where you have complete discretion. You have some because it is amendment to your development agreement, but they are already entitled, so it is a little bit different than most of the applications that you see.
If you feel that clarification, Bill? Ms. Strater?
Ms. Strater.
Yeah, just to respond to Councilmember Hoagland's question about some of the rationale, for me, I think, I do understand it's a modification, and I would think that the applicant would not mind waiting a bit longer to get better information themselves. I, personally, I think that it does not make sense to make a decision without full information, and that the information, from my perspective, from the West Data School District was not adequate for me to feel comfortable approving it, the increased density. And my reasoning would be that, from what I saw, all of the elementary schools that serve this area are overcapacity. I don't, I would like to know what their plan is before I approve another development adding more density than it has currently today, because the situation appears to be so acute from an overcrowding perspective, that I am reaching the point that I'm thinking, you know, I need to draw a line somewhere unless the West Data School District can tell me, "Hey, great news, we've got a plan. If you approve this, and we take these 167 students, divide it up over four years, here's how many it is per year, here's where they would go in the first year, here's the marginal difference on the schools they would go to, and this is our plan for the creation of a new school nearby." I mean, I'd like that information to make a decision. And I think we should be comfortable, I personally think in the past, there's a tendency to make a decision. I think for something this large, we should feel comfortable waiting to get the information that we are asking for to make a decision. And that's the information that I would like to make the decision. And I think it's a good project, and if West Data has a plan, I will likely approve it. But I would like that information first, I don't wanna rush into making decisions when I feel like I'm not being given adequate information, especially about what seems like brewing looming major issue.
Mr. President.
Mr. Board, do you have something to say?
You just keep on looking at me, and so I just wanna, I don't wanna...
Go ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I just would add, to me, it's not about the school, it's about the capacity of that school. So, Meridian Middle, I think, is a little over 20% overcapacity. I don't know what the capacity level is at Victory. If I remember from a previous application, they were undercapacity. So, that's the piece. If it gives me greater comfort being, to approve something, knowing that it's going to a middle school that's undercapacity, that we're pushing out more students to an overcapacity. And, I mean, from the school district perspective, the last I saw, I think they're, in total district-wide, actually 1,000 students undercapacity. It's a lot easier to move students from an elementary school than it is to a middle school, it's a lot easier to do it in a middle school than it is a high school because of the populations they serve. So, just having the clear data, to me, gives me greater comfort on the middle school piece.
Mr. President. Mr. Board.
On that broader point, I think any time that, if we've got one or more council members who would like some more information, it might not change the result, but certainly, we've always been respectful of that request, and if it assists any of us making more complete decisions, we all benefit that way, and the applicant and the public benefit. So, I'd be supportive of the request in light of the reason behind it. The broader philosophical comment on this application is, I really like it, and that I liked it in 2015.
Yeah.
I did. And it was appropriate at that time, and one of the broader macro concepts, not to get into it necessarily today, though, is, I'm not certain that you can build your way and alter a development like this, and create market equilibrium regionally by adding 60% more units in this project. It was a great project in 2015. You don't create affordable housing by doing this, nor is it this applicant's responsibility. It doesn't get you to market equilibrium in the bigger sense of what's happening in this valley. It's circumstances that exist now that didn't exist when I and I were younger. Nobody's fault, it's just the way that it is. So, any opportunity that we can get to try and create, quote, "Affordable housing" and decrease housing prices by this, without something more, is something I would struggle with. Because I don't think, I don't think that's the obligation of the application, I don't think that's the result of what happens here. You can move supply and demand curves, and you can see how this will perpetuate aggressive demand in the valley, and exacerbate costs, and all of the other services that create higher property taxes. There's a long rabbit hole of consequences that, just to add units to try and disperse infrastructure costs across more individuals, doesn't really solve the broader problem that our valley has. You wanna create market equilibrium, perhaps, you keep it in 2015, and you have the houses priced at $800,000, and demand cools, right? And that might be difficult for an individual, but regionally, it can get you to equilibrium. So, to get on a little supply-demand rant, it's, that gives me some pause for the, because I like the original application. So, I'm comfortable with continuing it, but I'm not so sure the justification for the change by itself is sufficient. Because I think L2 would've built the existing application fantastic, wonderful product, the developer's still fantastic with the existing original approval from 2015. I don't think, I think all that good stuff remains either way. So, that's some of my takeaways, there's a lot of great, but just that broader market equilibrium issue, which we're gonna be faced with for some time, I'm not so sure I subscribe to it.
Well, looking at the tea leaves here on council, looks like there are more than enough folks who are looking for more information from West Data, and which would require some type of, which would require a continuance. But before we go that direction, just to explain my thoughts, just some things that I was thinking, you know, this valley absolutely is in need for a diversity of housing. With our experience on city council, you know, folks generally get excited when there is a medium-dense project with high density right next to it. And my concern is, is, and I guess I speak to L2 and the realtors who are involved, just let your folks know what's gonna go next door for us. That would, that makes our job so much easier, so we don't have, you know, a packed room here in about a year or two when you guys start building out there, and people are saying, "We never knew about, you know, those realtors, they, you know, they just wanna sell homes, they don't wanna, you know, blah, blah, blah." It's just, it just makes our job a lot easier when people know what's going in next to them right up front. You know, what would be great, if you were to put a big billboard and say, "This is going to be apartments." It would make our job so much easier if you were to do that. So, just speaking to Code, if you can, if you're the lead man in that regard, if you can take the bull by the horns, and take care of that, that'd be great. Another question that I had, you know, it would make, I struggle with this empty lot that's a proposed future park for such a long period of time. I don't think there's anyone on council that is going to expect, or anyone from the Parks Department would ever expect you to start building parking lots, or buildings, or playground structures, or start planting a bunch of trees. I don't think anyone's looking for that, but, you know, to have like one big open pile of dirt for, you know, could be 10 years, I don't think we know. I just don't, I don't like that personally. So, I know developers not gonna like that, but it certainly would help out those residents in that area, and it would, it would help me out as well. With that said...
Mr. President.
Any direction from council?
If I, as your fellow council member and associate real estate broker, may comment on your suggestion, I would not, as a real estate agent, it's not advisable in general, and perhaps Mr. Hughes, who testified, he's a broker, and our fellow realtors here might have a different opinion, but when we begin to share with our clients what might be happening in an area, we put ourselves at legal risk to some extent. And so, what we normally would do in that situation is, we would recommend that that client find whatever information they could on the city website, that would show what was going on if that application had already been approved. But if there's a property that's there, and there's no application that's been approved, nothing that's been presented, then realtors are not going to comment to their clients what will be in a location that won't woe. Because if they're wrong, then now that client has made that decision based on information that's not accurate. So, just a couple of thoughts there in that regard. Not, this isn't specific to this application, but just, if we're asking, you know, members of the public to do something, I know that I don't share that with them, even if I know what is gonna happen as a council member, for example, I don't share that with my client, I just give them the resources to go find that information for themselves.
Okay. You know, by no means are, as is body, are we asking, you know, realtors to do anything else?
No, I understand what you were trying to do.
We're not trying to have anyone break any rules by that means, but it is, there is a preliminary plat that's been approved, and so, I don't think, you know, I just, with our experience, I mean, it happens every single time, there has to be some way to maybe, maybe with the information that's passed out, you know, with the welcome to L2 kits, whatever, have a preliminary plat out there, just so that, you know, whatever. You know, I don't wanna get you guys in trouble, that's certainly not what I was talking about. So, I know that April 7th is, we're getting back into the swing of things, we've been sort of slow as accounts with applications for a couple of months, but April 7th is pretty booked, and so, keep that in mind. I don't know if April 14th or March 31st, but April 7th is for sure a bad date.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
What's about, what about two weeks from now? What is that, the...
Would be the 25th, 25th, or excuse me, the 24th.
I mean, we're asking, I think, I guess, for me, we're asking for a letter from, updated information from the school district, should take, should take a day.
I agree.
So, I'm fine with either, I don't get, I don't know what our agenda looks like next week or the week after. I guess I'd look to the clerk for any comments.
Mr. President, Councilman Cavanagh, I'm opening it right now, I don't believe the 24th is bad. Just waiting on it to open in the background here.
Chris, what's next week look like?
Mr. President, Councilman Cavanagh, I got to the 24th, the 17th is open now. On the 17th, there is one public hearing scheduled, and the 24th, there are two or three. So, both are good.
Council's supportive, one week, continue to next week, I think we'll all be here. Becky, I'll give you a chance just to really, and I guess, sorry, Mr. President, I don't wanna step on Councilmember Strater's toes, but I'm happy to make a motion if that's okay. I move that we continue the public hearing to March 17th, to receive and to speak to information related to the school district. Unless council's needing anything else outside of testimony, I just, in an interest of time, we're continuing to hear info from the school district about where these students will go.
Second.
Excuse me, Dean. You didn't have to say anything, Dean, I just caught that myself. You're welcome. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No. So, then, for, to clarify, this has been continued for a week. Okay.
See you next week. Thanks, Paul, for sitting with us, too.
See, okay. That moves us to item 6C on a previous item from our workshop agenda in regard to... Discussion regarding council members designated to serve districts and so forth. And so, this past week or a couple of weeks ago, just for the public record, in the past, each council member minus the council president has had certain districts that we have, that we represent. And so, in the past, we really haven't utilized or represented those districts for a variety of reasons. There's been some discussion and been some interest recently in regard to taking advantage of this representation, and maybe having listening sessions, or city council town halls, something that I, as a council member, have been in favor for, for many years. I think it makes sense in light of what's going on in the state legislature, so it's not only our city, but other cities as well, that are, that will be discussing these issues shortly as well. So, a week or two ago, I sent out that district map and gave assignments in regard to which council member would represent each district. We sort of lucked out, in a sense, that for the most part, every district is represented by a city council member. It was, we actually got pretty lucky, and so it was easy to do. That information's on the public record for, you know, citizens to check out if they do desire. But what I propose is creating city council districts, and having a town hall discussion, listening session, once a quarter, a town hall-style, you know, listening session-type situation. I propose that all city council members would attend, at least for the first year, and the reason I say that is, maybe find out where it's going, maybe create a brand, maybe create some visibility. Also, I've gotten the okay from the mayor to use the mayor's office resources, you know, Shandy and all of her resources, to be able to advertise and to send out the message. And so, having multiple city council members, or having pairs go out, I do believe is a good idea, but maybe, maybe a little bit too much for the mayor's office to tackle all at once. So, maybe we all go out, and, as a group, and after a year, we can reevaluate, but have it a group effort, and have the person who, the district that we're visiting, having the town hall, have that representative city council member be in charge of that particular town hall or listening session, and create the dialogue, and organize the details. So, something that I've been thinking about for a while, putting out for discussion. Normally, we wouldn't use this venue to have this type of discussion, but we're all here, and it's just a lot easier than me meeting with each and every one of you, or talking on the phone, so just a lot quicker. So, open it up to your thoughts.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Sure.
In your discussion with the mayor, did he happen to mention whether or not the mayor's office would be willing to assist us in finding locations for the meetings? Or was it just about, more about presenting, or publishing the times and whatnot?
We didn't, we didn't talk about the details like that, I don't think we talked about if the mayor's office would assist in finding locations, but I'm sure that they would be able to do that for us, I don't think that'd be a big deal. Yeah.
Mr. President.
Strater.
Thank you very much for starting the discussion, and for your support of this initiative over the years, because I think it's a fantastic way to be responsive to our citizens, and I'm a big supporter of doing this, and I would be delighted to have a town hall meeting in any quarter that is convenient for you. I really wanted to try to do one sooner rather than later, but I think it's fantastic, and you're getting out into the community, not always expecting them to come to us necessarily, and just having open discussions is great.
Right. I completely agree.
Mr. President, I just wanted to make note, on the exhibits, there is a contact information for each of the council members, and Councilmember Perot wanted hers to change the phone number on there to be not her personal line. So, if all of you would double-check those contacts to make sure that everything on there, what you would want people to contact you. If not, Chris can make the changes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Do we know the last area of impact, because they're not technically a district yet, that... that the mayors, previous mayors, held a town hall meeting?
Oh, that's a good question.
I can't recall. I feel like it was North Meridian, but I guess all I would ask is, let's just make sure. I don't know who's going to get the, who's going to get the, you know, the straw drawn, but that's the fifth one that we visit. We kind of want to circle our community. So, again, maybe work with the mayor's office, figure out where the last one was, and then we can run in a clockwise or a counterclockwise fashion.
Also, one thing that I was thinking of is maybe doing it the first, first day of a certain week or whatever, each quarter, to make it so that it's easier to follow, for the public to follow, knowing that, you know, this week and this quarter and this day during the week, that we will be having a city hall, town hall. So, any other, any other ideas?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavan.
Couple of other questions.
Okay.
In terms of operations outside of this being our area of interest or area of paying attention to, are there any other operational changes?
Like?
Meaning, I assume if a citizen contacts the city or contacts the council, it doesn't matter where that council member lives, we all hear that. I just, I want to make sure that, kind of to our earlier strategic goal of being more accountable to the public, I don't want us limiting the set of ears that our citizens are able to connect with if they have a concern. So, you know, we don't want a citizen who reaches out, oh, I've got a concern about Discovery Park. Oh, well, Discovery Park's in South Meridian, so we're going to send that to Luke. We want the whole council to make sure that we're still being looped into the conversation with our citizens.
Great, great point, Luke. And I think that's one of the reasons why I think that going out as a group makes more sense. I think having a unifying voice instead of six different opinions, I think makes sense. And I struggle with that a little bit, because I think that, you know, maybe breaking up and visiting, you know, going in pairs or going out individually, I think we would reach more people quicker. But at the end of the day, I think that, I believe at least the first year, I think the group effort, you know, approaching this as a group makes the most sense for the exact purpose that you just spoke about. So, I, you know, I think that makes sense. I don't want to get into the weeds about the current legislation that's going out of the state legislature, but I don't, I don't, I don't want us to be divided as a group just because we're separated into districts. I want us to be unified. I want our voice to be one. Although, we do represent different parts of the city, we're a team, we're a brotherhood, we're a sisterhood, and we, and we act as such. And I think that's always been the case, and I really don't have any reason to believe that would be, it would happen otherwise. So.
We all represent the city.
Sure. Absolutely, 100%.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Cavan.
Our remarkable clerk in the time that we were chatting brought me a note that said our last town hall was in October.
Yeah.
And it was at Touchmark Village, or Touchmark at Meadow Lake Village.
That's right.
Which with a quick glance on the map, I think that would put that right in, in area number three.
Joe's off the hook.
Mr. President?
What?
I'm sorry, Councilman Cavan, full credit, Shandy Lamb brought that to me, so I want to give her credit for that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Shandy Lamb.
Mr. President, Mr. Neri just brought to my attention that this map is about five years old.
Right.
And pretty out of date from population standpoint and new developments that have come on. Is there any interest in the council trying to get an updated map to add to the exhibit?
Yeah, I don't think, I guess we could, but I don't think it's going to change where, right, at least right now, where we're going to fall as far as where we represent. I think where we live and where it's, I think it's, I think it's about as good as we're going to get. I think there's a million different ways to skin this cat, and, you know, there's a decent chance we're going to have to redo this and, you know, maybe in a year. Yeah, I mean, you know, that's, that's sort of the direction they're wanting to take. That's fine, but there's a decent chance that we're going to have to revisit this in a year or two anyway, so.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavan.
So, if we're following a clockwise trajectory, I'm happy to have our first one, if we'd like, in the, in the south side, and I'm happy to work with the mayor's office, with Josh, who I think is, as with the last budget, half of her time is supposed to be kind of logged for councils. So, I think we could work with her to
Sure.
Identify a location, date and time, maybe the council president, the mayor, and I can bring back in a week or two.
Some information.
To begin.
Sure.
A pilot.
Sure.
Mr. President, just one clarification. So, all the council members are attending the town hall, and each quarter, it'll be in a different district?
Yes.
Okay, so it'll take us approximately six quarters to get, or five, five quarters to get through. So, our last one will be sometime at the end of the first quarter next year?
Right.
Somewhere around there, something like that.
As a group, as a group, I think that's how we're going to, we're going to tack it right off the get-go. If you guys want to go out and, you know, meet the public, you know, there's no one stopping you. It's just that it's unofficial, and, and probably won't have the support from the mayor's office. But like, if you want to go out and talk to people in your district, I mean, no one's stopping you, ever. What do you think, Mr. Cavan? You want to say, every week, every, every month, you're going to be in your district? At your house, maybe? I don't know. Open mic? Karaoke?
I love engaging with the public whenever, however, but yeah, it's, I'm always as their council member. It's not, I don't, I don't do unofficial, double-secret probation meetings. It's if the member wants to meet with the public.
We always do. We all do it.
With us.
No big deal.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Have you contemplated the open meeting law, that you have to comply with if all of you are going to go to this meeting?
That's right, so we'd have to notice it.
Right, and record it.
Excuse me?
Record it.
Okay.
Record it.
Okay.
Mr. Neri, help me understand how this is different than if the council gets together at Christmas time for dinner?
So, when you're having dinner, it's not a meeting. You're having dinner. You didn't invite anybody to the public to come tell you things. So, it isn't making decisions, it's getting information to potentially make a decision. And so, a town hall meeting, you are going to be getting information, just like our open mics.
Got it.
Those kind of things. So, that's the deliberative part that the law contemplates, that you're going to get something. So, so it does, it is required by code to be recorded and noticed, just so you know.
Follow-up. So, how recorded, does it have to be like livestreamed or anything like that?
No.
Just recorded?
Just recorded, yeah. I mean, the Idaho code is still pretty archaic, so it doesn't require reel-to-reel recording, but it does require a manual recording. Doesn't have to be, it can be, it can be, it can be very cursory minutes
Okay.
From it, but you do have to keep track of that, so.
Okay.
Mr. President, just, so, so when the invitations are sent out, is that just going to members in that district, but anyone from the public is welcome to come to the town hall, but the invitations would just be sent to that district? Is that kind of how that's going to be?
I think, no, I think that it would be, that'd be pretty tough to do. I mean, maybe specific, like on Nextdoor, maybe.
Okay, a digital.
But as far as, but as far as how we would advertise, it would be advertised to the entire city.
Sorry, say that again?
It would be advertised to the entire city.
Okay, okay. Mr. President?
Yeah. Mr. Strater.
I think that that makes a lot of sense, because they won't be held as frequently in each district area to invite the whole city. Would make a lot of sense. That way, if someone does have something pressing on their mind, they can join us. And I would think we could take minutes or whatever is necessary to satisfy, Mr. Neri.
No big deal.
President, I just was going to say, at least for the first one, I don't anticipate sending out any invitations. I just think we'll blast it on Nextdoor.
Right.
We'll rely on our friends in the media to help maybe spread the word that this is an opportunity for the public to turn out. Thanks for your work on this, Mr. President.
Yeah, my pleasure. So, I guess, going forward, Luke, Mr. Cavan and I and the mayor will get together with Josh, and we'll hammer this out, and we'll have some information in a couple of weeks. Okay, all right. Item number seven, ordinances.
Mr. President, do we need to adopt the resolution for that?
Oh, yes. Yes, forgot about that. Yes, we do.
I'm getting there, Dean. Thank you. Mr. President, I, if we're moving on to what I believe is 7D, I move that we approve resolution number 20-2189, resolution appointing the city council, president's appointments of city council members to serve as contact for representative city areas.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion passes.
Mr. President, I want to make one correction, if I could. See, I looked up the code, so it does require written minutes. They don't have to be verbatim minutes. They don't have to be recorded, so, but you do have to have somebody keeping track of who was there, what was talked about, and that type of stuff. So, we'll work together on that, get that taken care of.
Perfect. Thanks, Bill. I jumped the gun a little bit now. We're at item seven. Item 7A is ordinance number 201874. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's ordinance 201874, an ordinance related to Hensley Station, H. 2019-0120, for annexation of a parcel of land located in the southwest one quarter of Section 10, Township 3 North, Range 1 West, Meridian, sorry, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A in annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian as requested by the city of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 7.17 acres of land from RUT to R15, medium-high-density residential zoning district for the city of Meridian Code. Provided the copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Chris, that's very impressive. I move that we adopt ordinance number 201874 with a suspension of rules.
Second. I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 201874. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion passes. Item 7B, ordinance number 201875. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's an ordinance amending Meridian City Code, Section 4-2-1, regarding definitions, adding a new section, Meridian City Code 4-2-2C, regarding maintenance of public trees on public rights of way adjacent to private property, amending Meridian City Code, Section 4-2-3D, regarding abatement of nuisance trees, repealing Title 13, Chapter 1, Meridian City Code, Meridian Forestry Ordinance, adding a new section, Meridian City Code 13-2-11, regarding establishment duties of the city arborist, adopting a savings clause and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Ordinance 20-1875 has read by title. Does there anyone in the audience that would like to have the clerk read it in full? Ralph? No? Okay. All right then.
Mr. President?
Ms. Perot.
I move that we adopt ordinance 201875 with a suspension of rules.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion passes. Thank you. 7C, ordinance number 20-1876. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance related to Percy Subdivision, H. 2019-0097, for the DXD annexation of property located at 5570 South Meridian Road, Meridian, Idaho, in a portion of the government lot 2 of Section 31, Township 3 North, Range 1 East, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. Setting forth a reasoned statement in support of such deannexation, directing the city engineer to lodge and file a legal description and map for said deannexed lands and territory, providing the copies of this ordinance and said legal description and map of said deannexed lands and territory, shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, ordinance number 20-1876 has been read by title. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to have this ordinance read in full? Ralph? Ralph says no. All right then. I have a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt ordinance number 20-1876 with a suspension of rules.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion passes. Item eight, future meeting topics.
Mr. President?
Ms. Perot.
We discussed a couple of weeks ago, possibly putting together some suggestions for the school district on what we would like to see in their, the letters that we received from them, and I think tonight's application is a very good example of, of our need to do that. And I feel like they gave us the green light in our joint meeting to ask them for more specifics in what they're sending us. I agree with Councilwoman Strater's comments about wanting to hear, you know, more about the ratios of students. I also would like to be hearing information as far as how many elementary students are moving into middle school each year, moving into junior high the following years, and then also would like some information from the district on what their plans are to, you know, we know that for an indefinite amount of time, there's certain schools that are going to be over capacity, and I'd like to hear what their plans are. Are they putting the students in portables? Are they building additional classrooms like they've done with Mountain View? I don't like waiting until we have a bond proposal before we hear about their plans for actual construction that's going to happen. I want to know how they're, how they are handling, you know, for example, we saw the letter that said that, that Meridian Middle is 200 students or 220 over capacity. What are they doing with them currently? Where are they placing them? Are the classroom sizes larger? I just would like some more detailed information. Maybe that's some, some of that information comes in a one-time report that's not specific, that's so they don't have to recreate it for every application, but maybe some of it is specific to certain applications, so.
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavan.
To that, to that point, I think different schools will handle growth different ways. So, there will be some schools that are going to have a higher percentage of students per classroom. Others will be deferred to modulars classrooms. I do think there's some benefit in having an understanding as to what the average student per classroom is. On that letter that we received from the district, it often identifies other schools that the students could be sent to. Well, I would like to see those numbers as well.
Mr. President?
Ms. Strater.
I agree with that information request from West Ada, and I would like to see that same information. And while we're on the subject of future meeting topics, I did want to mention, I know that Councilwoman Perot was assigned a pretty big project to work with the planning department on their, you know, kind of sort of a process, I just call it a process improvement initiative, and thought it might make sense just to check in, and if everyone wants to hear, just I would like to check in and see how that's going, and maybe if, going to give us a feel for in the future, if you want to present something about that.
Perot.
Did I understand Councilwoman Strater correctly that you'd like an update on that, or is that something you wanted staff to have, to present?
Maybe both, but I'd love an update from you, just where are you in the process? How's it going? I apologize, Mr. President.
So, I'd be happy to do that. So, I sat down with staff, and we've put together a preliminary spreadsheet of the types of changes that we feel are most beneficial, and that, that information is coming from what we're hearing from the public, what we're hearing from the stakeholder committee, and conversations that we have counsel have had in our observations. So, it's, there's been a variety of different reasons that we've set, set out the recommendations that we're going to pursue. But that's just the beginning process, that's just our base. And so, then that information is now going to be provided once, once staff finishes setting a prioritization of each of those items. So, we're going to discuss which items will require code changes and which ones are just really process, internal process changes. Staff's working on that right now, and once that's done, then that spreadsheet will be reviewed again by myself and likely the council president and the mayor. And then, at that point, we will probably present that spreadsheet to the stakeholder committee, again, on the items that will require code changes. And again, this is sort of an unofficial timeline, so if staff recommends we change how we're doing this, this is what I understand to be the, this process currently, then at that point, I know we will still need to have some conversations with ACHD, because part of the process change will have to do with, with potentially postponing the, any public hearings until after the final ACHD report is presented. Again, this is just suggestions at this point, and so there may be a need for us to have some further conversation with ACHD about what that looks like and how we coordinate with the timing of that. And then, once that happens, I think that'll be the point in which staff is ready to present that to council as a whole. So, their, their, their goal is to have the initial spreadsheet finished with all the prioritization and provided to council president and the mayor, I think, by the end of March. And then, the anticipation to bring before council will probably be sometime like late spring, early summer. At least that's what, depending on how long the, the conversations take with stakeholder committee and, and ACHD, and then any other recommendations or changes that, that may come into play that we're not aware of. So, that's the, that's what has been discussed at this time. And of course, if any of you have any recommendations or thoughts, email it to Caleb is who I've been working with. Please CC me as the liaison, because that, we're putting together the base spreadsheet right now, so anything, I would invite you to please provide any input. It, none of the primary categories have changed, so I, I believe- None of the primary categories have changed, so I, I believe we initially discussed those primary categories, which is neighborhood meetings, timing for when applications are basically first heard at the, at the planning and zoning hearing. Do we, currently, the, the, the 30 days that it takes to notice is the timeframe in which we're waiting for the ACHD hearing to happen, and oftentimes that, that hearing doesn't happen within the first 30 days that it's noticed. So then, planning and zoning gets the application prior to ACHD submitting a final report, and, and so those, those two timetables happen concurrently right now, but the idea might be to, to then make them one follow the other. So, and then, a conversation about, what was the, the third item? Anyhow, we, just anything related to the process, if you have some thoughts, please,